John, John. Do we have any more chairs?
Oh, really?
All right, let's call to order the school board organizational meeting, January 3rd, 2019, 6:00 PM. Barb, could I please have a roll call?
Certainly. Director Burns?
Here.
Director Pearson?
Here.
Director Pelletier?
Here.
Director Patachek?
Here.
Director Riley?
Here.
Director Stivland?
Here.
Director Weisberg?
Here.
There is Quora.
Thank you very much. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item four on the agenda is the district mission and school board goals. I have the mission statement by Director Stivland.
Thank you. The mission of Stillwater area public schools, in partnership with students, family, and community, is to develop curious individuals who are active and engaged leaders in an ever-changing world by challenging all students as they travel along their personalized learning pathways.
Thank you very much. And school board goals, Director Pearson?
Thank you. The Stillwater area Public Schools Board of Education ensures outstanding learning opportunities for the social, emotional, and academic growth of every student in our school district through authentic partnerships and meaningful communication with our community, parents, and students. Every decision is made with a commitment to equity for all students and for future generations impacted by our actions. Goal one, we provide our stakeholders with regular updates on student achievement along with continual plans to enhance student learning in our district. Two, we ensure that our systems of management and oversight are clearly defined. And number three, we invite ongoing dialogue and partnership with our community to learn from their knowledge and to enhance learning for our students.
Thank you very much. Item five is the approval of the agenda. Could I please have a motion in a second?
So moved.
So moved by Director Stivland, a second?
I'll second.
Director Pearson? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda is the oath of office. It's my pleasure to deliver that. I think we're going to have everyone just come up here. I'll read your oath for the newly elected board members. Let's maybe come over by Mark, maybe I'll just kind of stand here.
To tell people get the back.
A little bit of reading to do first. It is an honor that you were elected to guide the education of our community's children. As you recite the oath of office, you assume a tremendous responsibility as a director of our school district with the duties empowered by the Minnesota Legislature. This power puts you and other members of our school board in a position of being both morally and legally responsible for equitable quality education for every student in the district. In carrying out this responsibility, you will be asked to fulfill the roles of vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. In providing vision, the board with extensive participation of the community envisions the community's educational future and then formulates the goals, defines the outcomes, and sets the course for the public schools. To achieve this vision, the board establishes a structure and creates an environment designed to ensure all students the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. Because as a board, we must be accountable to the community, we must ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children. As board members, we serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community schools to advance the vision for our schools. Furthermore, we must strive to work together with the superintendent and staff to lead the district toward fulfilling the goal, the vision we have created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills and knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state.
I affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state.
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of school board member of independent school district number 834
The duties of the office of school board member of independent school district number 834.
To the best of my judgment and ability. Congratulations. All right, we are on to board organization, which is item seven on the agenda. The first item on this item here is the election of the chairperson. Could I please have a nomination? Nomination for chair. Director Stivland?
Do we just say we want to nominate, or what do we?
Yeah.
Could I nominate Mike Patachek?
Absolutely. And is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Director Riley. Director Patachek, do you accept the nomination?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Okay. Any other nominations for chair? Any other nominations for chair? Any other nominations for chair? I just, would, does anyone have any questions? Or, okay, Director Burns?
Would it be appropriate for me to ask a question?
Absolutely.
Of the nominee. Mike, a theme that came up very commonly during the campaign was the divisiveness that has, in many ways, gripped the board and the work between the board and the administration. As board chair, how do you anticipate that you're going to work to foster an environment that is cohesive among the board as well as cohesive with the administration?
Thank you for asking. This is, I've been on the board for 10 years. This is the first time anybody's ever asked a question of the candidate. But to answer your question, I think one thing that I'm very good at is I've been in the minority for a long time. I respect the minority. And if I'm elected chair, everybody will be heard and with respect and with consideration. I think that goes a long way to building unanimous support for a lot of things. I respect all seven members of this board. Some of them, like yourself, I don't know very well. I encourage everyone who's on the board to feel free to call or contact me at any time. And if I don't live up to that respect and understanding, let me know about it. But my number one charge that I believe, and I've thought about this a lot, is to restore trust and support in this community. And I think I can help do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Does anyone else have any questions that they wanted to ask? I, it spurs a question that I had too. I think, you know, we all want what's best for this community, Mike. And you have been here a very long time. And you have a wealth of knowledge. And I guess for me, you speak quite a bit and quite strongly, truthfully, about the idea of the majority versus the minority. And I always kind of would push back on that a little bit to say, that's not how we should be. So I'm wondering, and I'm hoping that you feel the same way. And could you speak, could you speak a little bit to that? Thank you.
I think sometimes too much attention is directed to where we were split. And especially where it was 4-3. And before 4-3, it was often 5-2. At the same time, as long as you've been chair and previous to that, there were an awful lot of 7-0 votes. And more so than I think is recognized many times. And so again, it's the idea of understanding. It's the idea of respect. It's being heard. Lots of times, I was heard, but my thought did not prevail. I suspect going forward, there'll be times when my thought doesn't prevail. I don't know if I necessarily believe, as some do, that a 7-0 is a signal of a stronger board than a 4-3. I have been raised to respect minorities and minority decisions and expressions as well. So that's how I kind of respond to your request and your question. And I respect it a great deal. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Any other questions? All right, I think we're ready for a vote. All those in favor of electing Director Mike P- Excuse me? No, when we don't have another, we don't do. We don't go to a paper ballot.
Okay.
All those in favor of nominating, or of electing Director Mike Patachek as chair, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Mike.
First of all, I'm not going to talk real long because if I do, I'm going to pick up what Jennifer does many times. But I would say this, number one, thank you. I appreciate this a great deal. Secondly, I say this with all truthfulness. This is a very humbling experience. But I guarantee you, I will do my best to make it in the interest of all kids. And that's my number one concern. Those of you who've been around me for a long time know that the emphasis, when I came in and threw out, has always been on student outcomes. That's what matters. Are our kids learning what they're supposed to learn? So that will be our goal. Thank you. Going on, let's go to the next order of business. And it's the election of the vice chairperson. Are there any nominations? Sarah?
I would like to nominate Shelley Pearson.
Shelley has been nominated. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Liz Weisberg. Are there any other nominations?
She does accept the nomination.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes. She has accepted. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, the, all those who are in favor, please signify by raising your right hand and voting aye.
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 It's unanimous. Shelley, congratulations. Election of clerk. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Sarah Stivland.
Sarah has been nominated. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Shelley has seconded. Do you accept?
Yes, I accept.
Catch on. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, would all those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your right hand, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Again, it carries unanimously. We move on to the election of treasurer. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Liz.
Tina nominates Liz Weisberg for treasurer. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Sarah seconds? You accept?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, all those who are in favor signify by saying aye and raising your right hand, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Again, it carries unanimously. Congratulations to all our new officers for school year 2019, '20. Wow. Moving on to superintendent's report, item number, numeral eight. Superintendent Pontrelli?
I have four events to share with the board and community, a couple that you're aware of and a couple that are reminders. Tomorrow, the Association of Metropolitan School Districts is having their annual opportunity to meet our legislators. And the school board already had a legislative breakfast where we invited folks in. But tomorrow, the new Department of Education Commissioner, Mary Catherine Ricker, will be there. There will also be an opportunity to listen to a legislative panel with Jim Davney, Sondra Erickson, Carla Nelson, and Chuck Uyger. And so that happens tomorrow. Breakfast starts at 7:30, and the session is from 8 until 10 at Quora. And that is the new remodeled 916 area where it's being held. Also, we have coming up on Friday, January 11th, which is just around the corner, at 9:30 AM over in Roseville at the Radisson Hotel, is the C General Assembly that's coming up, general membership meeting. And so we'll remind you again before then, but that is on the 11th. Tomorrow, we'll be getting ready for Saturday, the Da Vinci Fest. And for those of you who have been, you know that it's an extremely incredible experience for our kids and community across the school district. Doesn't matter where students go to school. Da Vinci Fest is a free community event that's really a celebration of art and science. And this year, we're adding the Upcycling Fair, which I think is going to be really interesting to see what our students come up with. But it's an incredible endeavor by the Partnership Plan. And in addition to the science challenges and student art, the jockeys of comedy are going to be there. There's usually a demonstration of ice sculpting, podcasts from our Stillwater area high school students, make and take art projects, just a number of people engaging to make it a successful experience for our kids and families. So I would really encourage you on Saturday to head out from 1 until 5 and experience that if you haven't before. And then the last piece is the Sweetheart Ball to keep our sweethearts safe. And those of you on the board know that we have a group of retired teachers who have been working to gather donations to help support the Stillwater area Public School Safety Fund. And this Sweetheart Ball is being hosted at the Grand Garage, the Grand Banquet Hall. And music will be provided by our jazz band. So it'll be a great evening of entertainment, whether you like to dance or just listen. And there's a dinner, dance, and silent auction. And it is on Saturday, February 9th, hence the Sweetheart Dance, from 6 to 9 PM. So I'd encourage you to share with folks that opportunity and come out and support our Retired Teachers Association, who is helping to raise funds for the school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to student report.
Hello, everyone. My name's Nikhil Kumar, and I'll be starting out the student report. Now, this week, students walked through the high schools doors after a nice winter break. From staying in bed as long as possible, students now must make the expedition back to school. The theater department is currently casting for the musical Les Mis, a popular book, play, and movie. Many are excited for the final product. As we begin to switch into the winter season, we now start focusing on winter sports. Tonight, there was a wrestling meet against Forest Lake held at Stillwater area high school. Alpine Skiing's Varsity Invitational was at 3:30 PM at the Powder Ridge Ski Arena. Nordic Skiing's Varsity Meet was at 3:45 against Mounds View, Forest Lake, White Bear Lake, Woodbury, East Ridge, and Roseville. Gymnastics has a varsity meet tonight against White Bear Lake, who is currently ranked number one in the state. This started at 6 PM. Boys Swimming and Diving has a varsity meet tonight, also at 6 PM, against Forest Lake, held at Stillwater Middle School. Boys Ice Hockey faces White Bear Lake tonight at 7:30 and the St. Coroy Rec Center. And finally, Boys Varsity Basketball Play tonight away at East Ridge at 7 PM. I now pass it off to my co-president, Abdulziz Mohammed.
Oh, okay. Hello, my name's Abdulziz Mohammed, student council co-president at the high school. I'll be speaking on academics as well as student council affairs as of late. With winter break's conclusion, students have been getting back into the swing of things. The semester is wrapping up as we are getting to the tail end of the grading period. Finals will be on Thursday, January 17th, and Friday, the 18th. Students and parents should look to communicating with teachers in the upcoming weeks to ensure that grade marks are reached to one sufficiency. In terms of student council, planning is speeding up as we are getting to three of the biggest events of the year, the Snowball Dance, Blast Week, and Battle of the Bands. For Snowball, it will be held on Saturday, February 2nd, from 7:30 to 11:30 PM at the GX Event Center. Students can look to buy tickets during the week of the 21st and the 28th of this month during lunches. The dance is historically sold out, so make sure you get your tickets to see Nikhil and I sweating on the dance floor. Blast Week stands for Be Loving and Sharing Together, a week that we promote unity between all students, staff, and culture. We do this through hosting different events, ranging from inviting speakers to talk about a wide range of topics, holding a cultural fashion show and a talent show, selling food and merchandise, giving blast grants to teachers who apply, and many other things as well. Blast Week will be held on Monday, February 11th to Friday, the 15th, where we cap it off with the Battle of the Bands that Friday night. We hope for the utmost participation. Last week, we'd like to welcome the new school board members, Tina Riley, Liz Weisberg, Shelley Pearson, and Mark Burns. Nikhil and I have been very passionate about our roles on the board, fostering a multicultural environment instrumental to meeting the needs of the students and community. Student voice is an integral part to how this board functions, providing a lens that would be absent without it. We look forward to working with you guys as well as the returning board members for the remainder of our term. That concludes the student report.
Thank you. And now we have district recognition.
Thank you. So I'd like to call John Perry and our technology team forward. Some of you might know this already, but our district's technology staff was named the TIES 2018 Technology Team of the Year for their outstanding work and leadership. TIES, which is now a part of Sourcewell, provides educational technology services to schools across the state. Team members who are with us are Julie Balfons, Chris Fahy, there he is, Matt Howe, and John Perry and Mike Teachout. The tech team works to help our teachers use technology and innovative waves in the classroom to help make learning fun and meaningful for all of our students. So thank you for being here this evening.
Thanks. Good evening, board, and congratulations to our- As you know, I'm John Perry, the district's director of learning technology. And it's my honor to present to you our winners of the TIES award. They received the Technology Leadership of the Year award in front of thousands of their peers at the TIES conference. So it's a pretty big honor to get recognized in front of that big group. So we've brought the awards here today and the team in order just to be able to present that in front of our local community and our school board. Our technology integration team is made up of four staff. Two of our staff are licensed instructors. They support instruction K-12 in the areas of increasing student engagement, teaching critical digital era technology skills, and enabling anytime, anywhere learning for our kids. Much of their work is done in support of the district's portrait of a graduate and the development of students as global problem solvers through the development of the four Cs, the collaboration, critical thinking, communication, and creativity. In our kindergarten through 5th grade classrooms, Julie Balfons has been integrating robotics through our Dash and Dot program as early as 2nd grade in support of literacy and coding, as well as using microbit computer controllers in 4th and 5th grade to support STEM math and science. Julie is also the leader of our Geek Girls Club in middle school where students are supported to find their path in high-tech careers. She is also a mentor for students, teaching our middle school students to directly support our elementary school students. Chris Fahy and Matt Howe support our middle schools and teach our design and make courses. Chris has partnered with our gate teachers to provide additional enrichment opportunities for students looking for more depth and challenge. Together, they were able to open our fabrication labs for the first time this summer, both to our students and to our public community. Their classes have developed products for our innovation conference, designed and created new signage for their own schools, created shirts and hats, as well as reverse engineered numerous parts and products in order to repair and improve the function of equipment at their schools. Their programs teach kids to identify problems in their community, develop solutions, and implement them. Additionally, they've been working with Mike Teachout on the deployment of our consolidated learning management system. Mike has been their team lead in the area of moving all secondary teachers from various teaching platforms onto the Schoology platform so that parents and students and teachers will have one place to go to access those learning resources, creating a common platform that everybody can gather at. I think it's really important to keep in perspective the role of technology in schools and what this team does because it's beyond what sometimes we think of as school and technology as doing the same things we normally do, but on computers. And they're really looking forward, at our meeting on the 17th, to getting to show you a lot more of what that looks like. And I assure you, what you see will blow your minds. It is not kids just working on computers. It is robotics. It is creative thinking. It is high levels of student engagement. So with that, I just want the team to get a chance to introduce themselves and present their awards.
I'm Mike Teachout, and I'm the technology integration specialist at the high school.
I'm Julie Balfons. I am the technology innovation coach at elementary.
I am Chris Fahy. I am the tech integration coach at Stillwater Middle and the design and make instructor there as well. I think Matt Howe's at a hockey tournament tonight, so he couldn't be with us.
Probably.
You have any questions?
Board members, do you have any questions or comments?
Congratulations first. But can you each tell us a highlight of what you do? Just any highlight. Doesn't have to be your favorite, but tell us something.
I actually had a student today who, we really focus on design thinking. And her mom got in a car accident right before break. And so she just wanted to help her mom out. And so she came in and she sewed up a mask, put infused rice in it so that she could essentially cool her face down and help with her headaches and stuff for that. And so it was just her right away, quick thinking of like, I need to help my mom out. What can I do to help her? And then go through that process, so.
Thank you.
So hard to choose one thing. But I've been so proud of the students I've been working with that are starting a partnership with sustainable Stillwater. So we are trying to work with community members, professionals, environmental experts in our area to try to improve Stillwater. And the kids are working side by side with professionals and coming up and designing the future of their community. I'm very proud of them.
I think it's fun being at the high school, working with the students, helping them kind of learn, you know, project learning ways to kind of learn on their own. And I had a student ask me to show her a way to do something technologically, and I had to kind of fumble around to figure it out, showed it her. She came back after the week and said, Mr. Teacher, I know you showed this to me this way, but I found a better way to do it this weekend, and here it is. And then she acted embarrassed about it. I'm like, no, that's exactly the way we want you to think. So that was fun.
Very cool. Thank you.
John, do you have one of those?
I've got a lot. But honestly, my biggest celebration is being able to support the teams to do the work with the kids. I think that when, if you make it to Da Vinci Fest this weekend or what you see on the 17th, you'll really get to see the kids explain to you what their learning is like and how we're changing the classroom. My absolute favorite, though, is when I walk into a classroom and I see 100% student engagement, enabling learning of the standards. It's maybe easy to get 100% engagement, but it's not always easy to get 100% engagement around our core standards of instruction. And so when you can put those two things together, And so when you can put those two things together, you see the education of the future.
Are there any other questions? Congratulations and thank you for your service. We have this section now called Open Forum. We have one person signed in. But I would like to read the kind of rules that we follow. If you wish to speak to the school board, you will be able to do so at the start of the school board meeting during Open Forum. You may sign in only for yourself, not other individuals or a group, and only in person. The sign-in sheet is made available thirty minutes prior up to the start of the meeting. Due to time limitations, we will limit the number of speakers to twelve. No problem tonight. If you spoke at the last meeting, please consider allowing others to sign in before you. After you address the board, please leave the podium. Stillwater Area Schools welcomes input from citizens as community involvement fosters better decision-making and improved learning experiences for all students. While comments and questions are welcome during Open Forum, law prohibits the board from discussing concerns about individual employees or students in a public meeting. We will stop the proceedings immediately if employee or student privacy issues are raised and direct the speaker to forward comments regarding individual employees or students to the superintendent. Because we are modeling civil discord for our community, speakers must present their testimony in a respectful manner. Vulgarity, character attacks, malice, or specific complaints identifying staff or students by name or implication will not be permitted. The board will not deliberate, discuss, or engage in conversation with speakers during Open Forum. However, the board may ask administration to review the concerns presented. So having read those, our speaker who wishes to address the board tonight is Melinda Fero. And Melinda, will you please introduce yourself and also give your address for the record, please?
My name is Melinda Fero, and I live at thirty-one twenty White Pine Way in Stillwater. In two thousand twelve, Stillwater was the place to be if you were looking for a forward-thinking, innovative district with cutting-edge programs like flipped classrooms, technology integration specialists, the newish Gate program, and a dedicated gifted and talented support person. In fact, Stillwater was one of two districts to have a program like Gate at the time. That's what brought my family here. My son earned a spot in the Gate program for the twelve thirteen school year, and we moved here in the fall of that same year. So far, six years in, my kids like their schools. They like their teachers. They like the administrators that support them, and so do I, as a parent and as a professional. It's clear to us that everyone who works here truly cares about the students. What I was naive about when I chose to move here, what I wish I had known was that Stillwater has a long history of implementing great, wonderful programs and then pulling the support for them by cutting funding and people or by not fully funding them in the first place. There seems to be an utter lack of understanding on the part of the board and the community as to what educational professionals do and what effect constant reorganization has on all aspects of the organization. Perhaps the research-backed connection between sustained leadership, program implementation, professional development, increased student achievement is not connecting due to the constant change. There have been at least three superintendents in the time that I have lived here and a minimum of three complete reorganizations of the Teaching and Learning Department, the first of which occurred before I even moved. We've watched the cutting away at programs and support, adding job duties to already full plates, asking employees to do the work here that three or more people do in districts of similar size, time and time again. The current administration is only in its fourth year, and that's the most stable this district has been in quite some time in that respect. Every reorganization has led to a setback in terms of forward progress. In addition, a series of school boards have refused to fully exercise revenue streams within their power and to streamline facilities until the last possible second, pushing financial decisions down the road until we are, once again, needing to cut funding. Not listening to the educational professionals, city planners, and demographic experts called to report on the changing needs of the district and not acting on those pieces in a timely manner. But what possibly dismayed me more than all that is that, is with the exception of a small pocket, there's a largely uninvolved and uninformed community here. Because so few people watch these meetings, you as a board member cannot know if the people you hear from represent the entire community or not. And especially if you do not canvass the community at large with potential decisions, how can you be sure they support those decisions, you and the school district as a whole? I am an educational professional with multiple advanced degrees who has worked and lived in more than one district with a strong background in professional development, curriculum, and assessment. I tell you this because the things I've heard from the school board in the past six months have made me deeply concerned for my own children's education, both as a parent and a professional. Mr. Hepner stated at the last board meeting that Stillwater has seen cuts fifteen out of the last seventeen years. In addition, we are only one of two districts in the metro area that do not fully exercise all available revenue streams, one of only two districts without a technology levy. We are incredibly lean in terms of administrative support, and yet it is one of the cuts approved recently by the board. One of the many examples in this area is the high ratio of students to administrators, particularly at the middle level. The school I came from of similar size has twice the administrative support. But even more alarming were the comments made at the last meeting by two board members about job-embedded professional development for teachers. Statements were made that our teachers are so excellent that they don't need professional development, that they can do it on their own. It's clear in research that effective teachers are the number one factor in student achievement, and teachers only stay effective in so much as they are continually learning and growing in their profession. Any effective teacher will tell you that they cannot get enough quality professional development. My most valuable professional learning experiences, hands down, have been job-embedded peer-to-peer coaching and sustained workshops on best practices in my field scattered throughout implementation of research-backed programs, all things I did not learn in teacher school. In that same meeting, Mr. Potachik mentioned perhaps freezing jobs and not filling positions as they become available or adding job responsibilities to others. Not filling open positions would lead to doing less with less, meaning staff and students would suffer. You are a new collection of board members. You have tough decisions to make, and you will set the tone for the immediate future of this district. You, the administration, administrators, administrative support staff, the schools, the teachers, the students, and the parents are the district collectively. And so I leave you with this. The board has an opportunity to build and grow this district in positive ways, to focus on a positive continued momentum forward. This board has an opportunity to fully fund this district in a way past groups have not done and to bolster or at least continue the needed professional support for the teachers and students we all value so much. It's my fervent wish, as a parent, as a community member, and as an educational professional, that this board will do these things for the sake of all the children in the Stillwater area. The children are watching, and they deserve it. Thank you.
That ends the Open Forum. The consent items are listed as the minutes of the December twentieth, two thousand eighteen, school board meeting. Disbursement registered December fifteenth through twenty-first. That doesn't seem right. Human Resource Personnel Report. Designate District Depositories and Major Accounts. Resolution Authorizing Use of Facsimile Signature. Resolutions Delegating Contracting Authority. Resolution Authorizing Administration to Develop Specifications and Solicit Bids. Resolution Authorizing Executive Director of Finance and Operations and Supervisor of Financial Services to Make Electronic Fund Transfers and to Designate Official Publication and Amendment. The last one is Amendment to Finance Procedures for Disbursements. Question?
I would like to pull item I.
Completely pull it or just treat separately?
I, yeah, I just have a little kind of a, something that came up late this afternoon that I want to address and for future consideration.
Okay. And is it okay if we put it in C?
Wherever you want. Yeah, that's fine. Thanks, Mike.
Second for that?
I don't know that I want to pull, but B, I don't know if the dates, it reads December fifteenth through twenty-first.
Those dates are wrong.
Says December twenty-second through one-four. So I'm not sure if that's correct or not.
The dispersment register should be accurate.
It should read twelve twenty-two, two thousand eighteen, to one oh-four, two thousand nineteen. That caught my eye as well. So that correction. And is any other request, except the title change?
Nope.
I would make a request to move that to item D under Action Items.
What?
Disbursements.
We only have A and B.
Oh, you want to pull dispersments?
Yes, because I met with Kristin and her and I discussed several of those. And I'd like for the public to hear those and then vote on it as a separate item. And that would become D under Action Items.
I think, okay, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I just goes to the bottom of the consent agenda, and then it would be, the dispersments would be C under Action Items.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Yes, it does.
I would like to pull item F.
Is there a second to that, or do we need a second? I think in the past, we just.
I don't believe you need to make a second, Director Potachik. I think you can then just vote on the items that have not been pulled and then take them individually later on in the meeting.
Okay. Any others? So then we will be voting on A, C, or no, we moved C. No, we kept C. We'll be voting on C. And D, we moved.
No.
No, I don't believe so.
D, we didn't. Okay. F, we moved. And then G, Resolution Authorizing Administrators to Develop Specifications and Bids. That remains. H remains. And J remains. Is that accurate?
Did you mention item E in that? No, that E stays.
Okay.
Yeah, so E would stay in that motion that you're seeking right now.
Got you. Thank you. Is that clear to what we're voting on then as far as the consent? All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your right hand, please.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry. We need a motion in a second for that, and then we vote on it.
Okay. Would you like to make?
So moved. I'll second.
Is there a seconds? All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your right hand, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Now we go to partnerships.
Do we want to take some of these consent items now instead of? I know you said you wanted to move the dispersment register report down to an action item. But do we want to have the conversation about the items B, let's see, items F, I?
Just F and I.
Just F and I now, just to get them done?
Do you want to so move and then we'll see what the group?
It's up to the chair. That's your purview, Director Potachik.
I'm comfortable either way, so it's, let's do them now then.
Okay.
F?
Okay. So I just have two questions regarding F. In the past, this has come up as a question. This is the Resolution Authorizing Administration to Contract for Budgeted Items. Essentially, this is giving the superintendent, the executive director of finance, the right to, or the permission, the delegated authority to purchase and contract for goods and services that are within the budget the board has approved and not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars. I have proposed in the past, and I would like to propose tonight, that we alter that amount to fifty thousand dollars in the interest of trying to keep a closer look at what's happening with our budget. We are having to cut quite a bit of money out of our budget, and I think as a board, it would be good for us to keep a closer eye on our expenses. And, you know, certainly anything over fifty thousand dollars should be something that we should flag. And so then that leads me to my second question, and I'll make a motion in a minute, but we can, maybe we can talk about it just a bit. What does that look like when something is pulled for additional discussion? I think there have been quite a few items this past year, for sure, where there were amounts over a hundred thousand dollars that were spent, whether it's by project or whether it's an actual single check, that didn't come before the board in any way different than what we do any other expenditure. And so I'm just wanting to see, you know, what should we be doing as a board to make sure that all of us are aware of some of those bigger ticket items that are happening? And do we need to actually have them as separate action items? Do we want to have them listed separately in our consent items, you know, just listed out, and we could still vote on them as consent? I'm open to ideas to this, but I do feel like at this time, we need to have a little bit tighter hold on just awareness of what's being spent and where, you know, when things are being spent. So I guess I would like to hear other people's opinions before I make a motion.
Sure. And one thing I think in Director Hoheisel, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but this is our board policy, but the statute actually changed in August and went from to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Is that accurate?
For bid law, that is correct.
So, but you certainly, I mean, really what we need to know is which way you want to move forward with it. It doesn't, you know, if you want any single expenditure, if you want, I think where the confusion has been is if there, we've looked at it as single expenditures. If it's a project and it's going to be, you know, I think obviously the room here that we're working in is something that's come up, right? And so what do you want that breakdown to look like? We're happy to do that.
Well, and just to piggyback off that and ask a question, I think that's one area that, I don't know if our wording is what it should be, but my understanding, and I can't remember what it was, but there was one check that equaled over a hundred thousand, and that hadn't been brought to us. So I think that would have been my assumption it would come, but it didn't. So I'm not sure if this needs to read differently or.
Maybe it does, because I think if there's, usually what happens is if we're ordering something from one vendor, and it could be projects at different schools for different things, under that, it's going to come as one, we're going to pay out in one check often, not three different separate ones. So that's something for you to consider how you want that to look.
When I think this one was all for this room, if I'm remembering, so I think that's where, I just would have thought that would have come, and it didn't. So clarity around that.
Thank you. I believe that the statute, just in terms of what is being authorized, and this has been the policy, but Minnesota statute calls for the authority of per contract up to one hundred thousand dollars. So I, my understanding is that if, maybe for sacred convenience, if there was more than one contract that was being paid at one time, that maybe would have exceeded a hundred thousand. And maybe the board wants to, you know, address that. But in terms of, my understanding is that each contract, as long as it doesn't exceed one hundred thousand dollars, that's still within board policy as well as the statute.
Yeah. Specifically for this room, though, there were invoices that totaled over a hundred thousand dollars. They weren't ever brought before the board. So I think that's where the confusion is, because what it appears is that things were separated into chunks so that it wouldn't go over a hundred thousand, and that's bothersome.
But those would still be part of the dispersment register, right? There would still be those.
Right. But if you're saying over a hundred thousand, I mean, as a citizen, I'm thinking, well, if it's over a hundred thousand dollars, it should have been brought to the board, and it was well over a hundred thousand, and it wasn't. So if it is a statute, is there a penalty for not having done that?
I guess we'd have to take a look. That's not before us here.
Well, I just, I'm sorry, this is my last. I just don't understand why we have a policy if we're not going to follow it.
That is a great question. Director Hoheisel, I think you have something.
To answer Director Weisberg's question, it would be a finding in our audit. There isn't a financial penalty if it were to, it's one of those things where if you didn't, let's say, follow bid law, the auditors would find that, they would do a finding in our audit identifying that, and then if you didn't develop a corrective procedure to make sure that that didn't happen again, then there would be future consequences, but at least initially, it would be a finding in our audit.
Kristin, a question I have is this, when you were asked a question earlier, you said bid. Is there a difference between a bid and an expenditure?
Yes, there is. The statute, what is now one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, it changed August first of two thousand and eighteen for bid law, essentially requires you to put out legal advertisements. We'd be advertising in a newspaper a particular period of time for a particular contract. And I'm thinking I'll use roofs. If we were going out to do a roofing project, you have specifications of the project, and you, for the most part, have to accept the lowest price. You're not allowed necessarily a direct negotiation. It's whoever comes in lowest, and if they meet the specifications of what was in that bid document, they are awarded that contract. When we're talking about any sort of agreement that doesn't, or that falls under bid law, so whether it's just going out independently, if it's twenty-five thousand, under twenty-five thousand dollars, you only need one vendor. You only need to approach one vendor and they can, you can accept that. If it's between twenty-five thousand and a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, you need to get quotes. Again, you still have the flexibility to maybe go with a higher price if there's other things that matter to you. But that is the difference between, and I want to be careful that we're not, kind of, once we get to the dispersment level, that's the last step. So if there's going to be board approval for whatever dollar amount is you choose, I would suggest it happens long before we start the purchase order, because once we're at dispersments, it's kind of done at that point. You can hold a check if you're not, you know, you do that, but that would be my recommendation, look at it that way.
So the proposal that we're looking at right now and considering, that is for dispersments or bids or both?
It actually would be, again, it would be dispersments, but I would ask you to do it quicker so it's on the purchase order side of it, long before we ever get to where we've purchased or procured services.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, and I'm looking at the agenda item number F in the packet. If you look at number two, it says, "Any proposed lease, purchase, or contract exceeding $100,000 must be submitted to the board for approval." So I think that's what Director, that's what Director Hoheisel, that's what you're talking about. We would need to be at least discussing whatever that expense is ahead of time. The one item I'm thinking of right off the top of my head that flagged for me was last summer. I think we paid a one-time check to Skyward for our contract with Skyward, which of course is really important to our district, and it's something we've done for quite some time. But it was a check for like $130,000, if I remember correctly. And I remember thinking, oh, wait a second, that's one check. It's a standard expense that we all understand. It's in the budget, I'm sure. But according to this policy, that should have maybe been flagged in some way, or we should have treated it differently than, oh, it's just another item in our dispersment, you know, list. And so that's the question I'm raising, is, you know, just so that we can be made aware of some of these larger expenses, where are they coming, you know, where do they, we just need to be able to know about them, I think, and just be aware of them at the time. Whether that's before the decision gets made, I'm not sure what that should look like.
I think that's a good example, Director Stivlin, because I imagine, and Skyward has been here for a long time. So I don't, well, before I think most of us.
Nobody's questioning Skyward, but, you know, just.
But I think probably at that time, there was discussion about, we're going to have this new student information system. Here's what the cost is going to be, so the board decided at that time, and it's an ongoing cost. So for some of you who are newer to the board, or, you know, even those who are not, those are the kind of things where if you want to go through and have the conversation, and, you know, I've said this before, that typically school boards, you create the budget, and within the budget, you figure out how to manage that the best way that you can. But if that is a need that the board wants, we can certainly do that.
So then I think if, unless somebody has any other comments or questions, I would like to make a motion that for item F, that the board would authorize the superintendent and executive director of finance to lease, purchase, and contract goods and services that are within the budget that the board has approved, not to exceed $50,000. And if an item does exceed $50,000, that would be separated out as an action item at a board meeting at the appropriate time, as deemed by the superintendent or the executive director of finance.
So Barbara, do you have that motion?
I do.
Okay.
Did you get all that?
I did.
Is there a second?
A second, but I do have a question. Is there a way to say, or to word it, to say things can't be separated into smaller chunks to get around the limit?
I think I need to say something about that, Director Weisberg. I don't think anybody's been trying to get around it. Previous board chairs, I know there's a lot of, you can agree or not agree, but wanted us to get this space ready for board meetings and really for professional development. So trying to say that we're getting around it, we, all you have to do is ask.
Okay, well, I think it has been asked, and that's the frustrating thing. And when, when.
Well, maybe asked, but decided as a board. I don't think there's ever been a board direction.
And that's what, that's the problem. It wasn't decided as a board. It just was announced that we were moving here, and I think that's where the confusion and the frustration is.
I'd agree.
Other questions?
Just one quick question. When we're talking about dropping the limit from $100,000 to $50,000, do we have an idea of how many more that's going to, how many that's going to then put as an action item? Do we have an idea how often that comes up?
One of the things, Mark, we had gone through at a previous meeting was a sheet of all the consultants, different groups in the range. And I think there were only about a half a dozen or dozen of those that would have been over $50,000. So Kristin, does that sound about right or not?
Yes, it does. And it, you know, it certainly, as far as consultants go, that, when you talk about how many, and again, I just want to make clear, it's not, it's not a check. It's not, you're not looking at the total for a vendor, you're looking at the total for a contract. You know, you're talking maybe a handful a meeting, maybe. It's certainly, and whether it's placed on consent or as a separate action item, it's not going to be a great deal of information that's going to change.
The other question that I have, and you spoke to it earlier, and Mark did as well, where the statute changed from $100,000 to $175,000, that was for bids?
Yes.
Okay, so that's not this?
Right, correct.
Correct, okay, just so everyone has that clarification. Other questions or comments on the motion?
So I have a, I have a question. I, $50,000, that's a dramatic decrease. And I guess what I'm, I also understand, however, the confusion and the questions. So I'm wondering if there's some sort of, I don't know, Denise, how this would look, but I'm just wondering if we're maybe making a change to this because we haven't found a way to effectively communicate the policy and utilize the policy in the right manner so that everyone understands it. And I feel as though we are, we have various interpretations of the policy and how it has been implemented, or in some cases, in some people's opinions, not been implemented, all which have validity in each person's mind. So I guess I'm wondering if there's a chance that instead of decreasing it, we could do a better job of communicating what that exactly means so there aren't the surprises as when it comes out in dispersment, this and that. Is it a matter of that? And I honestly don't know who to ask the question to, to be honest with you.
One thing I'd say is this, I'm also sit on the 916 board, and we're voting on much of the same things that we're voting here tonight, we're voting there. They have, all the time that I've been on that board, they use $50,000. I don't know how widespread that is in the metro area, if that's common or not, whether it's 50 or 100. I think the attempt I'm sensing for 50, and I've also supported that in the past, given the times, the skepticism that's out there, I think $50,000, even if we did it for a year or a shorter time, would be a nice idea at this point. Other times, maybe we do it for six months, a year, and we change it back to 100, I'm not sure. But I'm saying, at this point, it would seem to me, when you want to build trust and put to rest some of the skepticism, $50,000 might be more in line of what I'm thinking should be. Director Stivlin?
I agree. I do see this as being something that is good practice, but I could see a time where we might get to a place where things are a little bit more comfortable financially, and we might not need to keep this close of a watch on things. So I could see that exactly. I concur. But I also want to say, I agree with you, Jen, or Director Pelletier, sorry. That it's twofold. One is the amount, and the other is the type of communication and how are we, how are we, making sure that we're staying clear and up to date on what's happening in terms of our finances. Just, it's a communication thing as well, so. I agree.
Thank you.
I just want to ask a question to clarify. So I think what I understand is the only thing we're changing is that three times it says $100,000, we're changing to $50,000. Keeping all the wording the same and just changing the amounts?
Barbara, do you have the original motion?
I thought she said it's separated as an action item.
The motion by member Stivlin was to authorize the superintendent and executive director of finance and operations to lease, purchase, and contract for goods and services that are, A, within the board budget, that the board has approved, and B, do not exceed $50,000. And the last part of that was, if it does exceed $50,000, that it is brought for a separate board action.
Which is what number two says now, right? So am I understanding that correctly?
So are you asking, should we change, so we change all the numbers to $50,000 and then also change number two?
Well, I think, I think all we need to do is change $50,000, but I want to clarify.
We're just defining that submitted for board, to the board for approval, which it says under number two, it's going to be an action item.
It has to come as an action item.
Yes. Do we need to clarify that in number two and change that as well? Or do we, do we have it already in the motion? Is that clear?
You be the judge. It's your motion.
To me, that it must be submitted for board approval means the board needs to approve it, which is board action.
I think it's clear.
Okay, a second or?
Second.
No, you did already. I just want to make sure you're comfortable with the second.
Okay.
Kristin?
Thank you. The only thing that I would ask, or at least make you aware of then, is every now and, and Mike and I had talked about this when we met this week. The only thing that could pose an issue is sometimes we have emergency situations. It's the middle of winter, a boiler goes down, something needs to be done. I don't have a board meeting and I'm going to be over that $50,000 limit. Now again, it's one offs. It doesn't happen often, but it does happen. And so at least be aware. I don't know if that's an emergency meeting. I don't know what that looks like, but I just want you to be aware that sometimes, again, it's not frequent, but it does happen that we need to do an expenditure immediately for, you know, the health and safety of the school, essentially.
Thank you. And that's rare, but I believe in that circumstance, and we'll examine policy and make sure that it's there. The executive committee, which would be the chair, the vice chair, and the clerk, might have to make a decision to do that. Barbara?
We do not have an executive working group.
Correct. So I think it'd come down to an emergency meeting, but.
All right. But thank you for pointing it out. That's something we'll have to work on soon, very soon. Any other discussion, any other questions? Saying none, all those are in favor of the motion of the most, of the change was really the amount from $100,000 to $50,000? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye, and please raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Two opposed? Did you get that, Barbara?
I did, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Going back to the next item, I believe is, that was asked to be separated was aye. Designate official publication.
Yeah, and this one.
Director Pelletier, you have it for.
Thank you. This one just, it's more of a conversation topic and possibly for future. I just, I actually just wanted to raise this publicly and just for future consideration. I received an email late this afternoon about someone who was concerned that given the massive change in our demographics and growth in the South, and that we have been hearing quite a bit that we're not doing a good enough job of communicating to the entirety of this community, that, this person said, "It's not to say that the Gazette is not an adequate publication." Moreover, you know, do what you say you want to do. And so I took that to heart, and I quick called Kristin Hoheisel on the phone, and I just asked, you know, give me a little background on this, and, you know, what is this all about? And basically, and Kristin, if you wouldn't mind just filling in where I'm going to botch this up, but basically, from my understanding is that a statute, it says, is required by statute to designate a newspaper, but do we have a policy that it has to be a newspaper? And, you know, we were talking about those kinds of things. And again, it's not to discount the Gazette. It's moreover to say, okay, are we really doing right by the entirety of the community and how we communicate to our, to our public, especially that growing part of our district in the South and the central part? So that's really what it was about. And Kristin, do you have anything to add to that or?
Absolutely. When reviewing the submissions, the proposals that had come in, in trying to look, one of the items that stands out is when you look at, that it's significantly lower than Lilly Suburban Newspaper. The challenge lies in that the 75 households for the Lilly Suburban are in Oakdale, Lake Elmo, and Woodbury. And I spoke with Director Pelletier about this, that at least a few years ago, I asked, you know, is there, can we get a breakdown of what is actually our district in those pockets as opposed to all of Oakdale, all of Woodbury? And they did not provide it at that time, to be quite frank, wasn't asked this time. And so kind of the distinction or the hard part about it is, yes, that number is significantly larger, four times larger, but we don't know how many of, how many of those subscriptions then are actually hitting our district. And so just then moving forward with kind of, we know the Gazette at least hits all of our district, and that is, at least for the first published, first publishing, it is the less expensive one. That's the choice we've gone with in the past, and assumed that that would be the choice that we'd move with this coming year. Now, again, you do have the option, I suppose, where we can publicize in both. You're looking at an additional cost. We can, you know, you do need, the newspaper publication did look that up in statute before the meeting started. You know, we can continue to try to do things on the web, but I don't know that there's a great answer to Director Pelletier's question.
Other questions?
Follow up for me, sorry. One second. Was that, I was thinking that, and I would love to explore this because I feel like we could even question some of the ZIP codes or geo-target or whatever. And maybe, Kristin and I talked about this a little bit, that I feel like there's room for growth in that, and maybe this is kind of a new, something that we could take on in the next year so we can do a better job of actively reaching out to our, some of these new pockets of population.
Carissa?
I would just add, from a communication standpoint, this is something that we struggle with all of the time because there is not a single communication newspaper out there. I mean, there truly isn't. And as you know, newspapers, especially local suburban newspapers, are sadly dying when it comes to the printed version. A lot of people do read things still online, but the printed subscription numbers for all newspapers have really gone down. Anecdotally, in working with the newspapers, I know that the Lilly Suburban Newspaper doesn't cover our district often when I send them information because they tell me, "We really don't serve your population." So that's just another anecdotal thing to be thinking about. I totally agree with Jen that we do need to figure out a way to communicate across all channels. But for this purpose, I just wanted to provide that context too, that they often tell us they won't run our information because it doesn't serve their community.
A question I would have, if you look at the Woodbury, it's a bulletin, or if you look at the Lowdown, which comes out of White Bear, are any of those in the running there? Do they cover? But even before you get to that, the question I have, does the statute say it has to be a newspaper?
Yes, it does.
Yeah, maybe that's one place we got to look when we meet with our legislature is to say, hey, look, that might be a good one to turn back to the district and local control and say, "We want you to cover, and it's in our interest to get it to as many people." So Jen, I respect your question a lot.
The Lowdown does not do submission of legal notices, so it does not serve the purpose of.
That's right. You said that in there. How about the Woodbury? Do they?
Haven't, that, again, that one wasn't, we did not receive a proposal from, and then the country messenger is, doesn't have the circulation that the Gazette does.
And again, all of this you run into, and I'm a bit of a dinosaur, so I'm not a judge on this sometimes, is that's pretty important to the Gazette and their backbone, I suspect. So it's, how do we reach the most people? Director Stivlin, you wanted to comment?
Oh, yeah. You know what? I just want to say thank you for bringing this up because this is something I've been thinking about too. I mean, I think the Gazette is an obvious choice, but we obviously, we have pockets of population that don't read the Gazette. And I, from what I understand, it seems like we have to have an official paper to publish in. But do we have the right to publish in more than that? We don't have to declare them as an official publication. We can just say, "We're also going to run in these." Or do we, would we have to declare?
No, you do need to designate one official publication.
Okay, and then if our legal notices were also in other papers, that's okay, but one is our official one.
One is the official. You can publish in more. It would incur an additional cost.
Right.
Mark did, I'm sorry.
And what kind of cost were we, are we looking at a lot of money?
If you, if you look at the handout, Sarah, you can see, I mean, that's kind of what you're.
Like when they publish the minutes and they do.
Right, no, I see the per inch, but I mean, how.
A set of board minutes? Oh, sorry. A set of board minutes typically runs between 100 and 140 dollars.
Okay.
So every two weeks, so it is pretty significant.
Yeah.
Did you have a question?
No, I have no question.
Others? Shelly?
I was just gonna comment. I'm glad you brought it up too, because even, you know, I think the Gazette is great, but when you think of our voters are like 60,000 and the Gazette reaches 1,800 households. So I think it's a both and. How are we?
Exactly.
We can't assume that everything's gonna get to people from the Gazette.
Yeah, that's exactly, that's exactly right.
Any other comments? What do you want to do with aye?
When with, well, can I just ask one more question too? I know that we legally have to have a print, printed legal notice, but are we putting our legal notices on our website as well? So that, would a lot of parents find that?
You can't see it, but there's a lot of nodding back there.
So where would that be? Under District News?
So we, we publish, official meeting notices go out, they're on our website. They're also sent out in all the newsletters. You'll see there's always at the bottom the upcoming meetings with the official meeting notice. It's out to parents that way. We also have, what else am I thinking of?
Well, the meeting minutes is what your official publication is and that is on the district website under School Board Meeting Materials.
Okay.
I guess, Director Patachuk, I would, I'm completely willing and able to make a motion to pass this. For me, I just wanted to bring it up and I think, I do feel strongly that we need to be more intentional with this topic and ponder different ways to actively and intentionally reach our growing pockets of the population. So that's kind of why I brought it up and other than that, I have no reason to not, you know, have any desire not to pass it. So I would make a motion to pass item aye.
I'll second.
Second. Any other discussion, questions, comments? Saying none? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by, Barbara?
Aye.
Shelby? All those in favor signify by saying aye and please raising your right hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving along, we are down to reports. And this one is a proposed partnership with Independent School District 833.
Thank you.
Superintendent Pontrelli.
Thank you.
This presentation, if you remember, over a year ago, the board voted to on withdrawing our membership with Equity Alliance. This presentation really tonight is to share with you some of the work that's been happening with South Washington schools. As you know, to receive integration funding, we need to have a partnership with another school district. And so Mr. Anderson is gonna be sharing with you some of the details of that. But just to recap, for those who have not been part of those conversations, over a year ago, Stillwater Public Schools sent a letter to Equity Alliance notifying the organization that we might be discontinuing our membership. Equity Alliance has been a valued partner over many years and we anticipate continuing partnerships in the future with them. The board will be asked to determine next steps with our formal membership on January 17th. The presentation tonight outlines the equity work that we've engaged with with South Washington schools in the area of professional learning and student engagement. And so we'll be welcoming Mr. Anderson here to share with you some of the work that's been happening over the past couple of years in those areas. Thank you.
I'd like to start by thanking you Superintendent Pontrelli and members of the board for the opportunity to share with you a report for action proposal to end our formal collaborative relationship with Equity Alliance and enter into a partnership with Independent School District 833, South Washington County Public Schools. What I'm asking tonight is that you do three things. One, listen to the proposal. Two, ask any questions relating to the topic. And three, vote on it as an action item at your January 17th regular business meeting. Stillwater Area Public Schools has been a voluntary member of Emid, now Equity Alliance, for close to 20 years. That relationship began June 15th, 2000. From day one, Emid has taught me and many other educators and educational leaders in our region the value of a fully functioning collaboration. This has occurred in three primary ways. Number one, the sharing of ideas. Members of Emid have always been willing to recognize, incorporate and leverage divergent thinking and perspectives while working towards shared goals. Two, shared resources. We've been able to build sustainable programming models by sharing financial resources to achieve mutually agreed upon outcomes. And three, shared political influence. I've had the opportunity personally to testify with other Equity Alliance members at the state legislature about the importance of retaining this important categorical funding source. For this, I wish to extend my gratitude to the Equity Alliance staff and their member districts. That said, I believe it's time for Stillwater Area Public Schools to shift gears and begin an achievement and integration partnership with South Washington County schools. These conversations began two years ago and I want you to be aware that we have the full support of our neighboring district. Christine Schaefer, the Assistant Superintendent in South Washington County, and Trina Patterson, the Achievement and Integration Coordinator, are the two that we've been collaborating with over the last two years. They were unable to be here tonight because they have their own Board of Education meeting. It falls at the same day and same time. But they wanted to give a shout out and say they're all in, so I just wanted to bring that to the table. This brief presentation is designed to do three things. First, briefly describe categorical funding and the purposes that it can be used for. Two, to show programming strengths and points of collaboration that have already been discussed and mutually agreed upon if the proposal is approved between the two districts. And three, briefly touch on how achievement and integration program components and how achievement and integration programming complements and supports our district's multi-tiered systems of support and social emotional learning framework. And that's really important because sometimes achievement and integration programming is seen as something else. What this is, this is categorical funding that complements and supports the work that we're doing for all of our students. And I'll be sharing some of that in a little bit. And finally, I want to extend and open an ongoing invitation to our new board members to spend time with me experiencing the program, programming I'm about to share. Yesterday, you talked to the wonderful technology folks and they said, you know, what was something that really kind of inspired them? And yesterday, I was working with a group of students over at the high school and they're working on a podcast. And I asked them, I said, what's your why? What is driving you to do this important work, to bring your voice to the table? And they had a clearly articulated why statement and I think it's important to share it with everyone. Here's what they said. "Our stories help provide context and meaning for our lives and can inspire us to think more critically about how we fit into the world and about what responsibilities we have to each other." And I believe this serves as an important reminder for all of us. I found so often in my 21 years working for the district that it's the students who are the teachers and I am the student. And that was one of those moments. So with that said, I'm gonna jump in here and kind of walk you through. The first piece is just really touching on this idea of categorical funding. Currently, Stillwater has had access to this funding because we are a voluntary member of the East Metro Integration District. What we will be doing is shifting from that to collaborating with South Washington County, which means we will still be eligible for the funding. The funding is basically used for four primary purposes. The first is professional development. The second is family and community engagement. The third is student programming. And the fourth is college and career readiness. So I want to start with professional development and kind of what's happened is we have had an ongoing professional development template that we've used in the district. It's called growing in intercultural effectiveness. And we're currently implementing that as part of a three-year cycle at our secondary schools. So all of our secondary schools are gonna have this opportunity. You can take a look, there's a little thumbnail sketch of the things that we touch on. South Washington County is very, very interested in sending some of their staff to our professional learning template. At the same time, South Washington County does a lot of work around what are called WICOR strategies. These are evidence-based learning strategies. Writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization and reading. They offered summer sessions to our staff, to 10 of our staff this summer as a pilot at no charge. So we had 10 of our secondary educators go and kind of taste their professional learning. And after kind of playing with both sides, both districts have said, this is something we'd like to continue to build a relationship around. Professional development is a priority for us. So those are the current things that are being done together. It's also important to note, going back to those evidence-based strategies, WICOR, what we've been able to do in our school district, when we were able to shift to a middle school model, we were able, these were strategies, these are learning strategies that we used to only provide to students in our Avid elective classes. When we moved to a middle school model, we built a middle school success course that touches every sixth grader and every seventh grader in both of our middle schools. Just a quick little story that I thought was kind of interesting. A couple of weeks ago, right before the holiday, we were doing the parent night for Avid. So at Stillwater Middle School, we had 62 parents in the room that were gonna make a determination as to whether or not their young learner was gonna be a part of the Avid programming moving forward. And I asked the question to the parents. I said, how many of you, when you were going through the educational system, had the opportunity to have a class about how to learn? Not what you're learning, but how to learn? What are the strategies that help you be successful with the what? And of those 62, one hand went up. And so it was kind of, it felt really good to think, as a school district, we're offering that opportunity to every sixth grader and every seventh grader in our two middle schools. So that's professional learning. The next piece is family and community engagement. The mission in this particular part of the work is to connect schools, parents and community together as equal partners in the education of every child and to provide all students with the option and access of a post-secondary education. That does not mean that all students will choose a four-year college, but it means that from a preparation and a choice standpoint, that those are options for all of our kids. That's the philosophic ideal that we're working toward. And the work that we do with these particular groups are designed to help parents navigate the school system. You know, one common thing that we hear is, when the Friday backpack comes home, there's just so much and I don't know how to sort it and what's important and what's not. And how do you navigate skyward as a parent, et cetera, et cetera? How do parents support home learning environments for their own children? This is a challenge with my own two middle school kids. Developing skills for collaborating with school staff and providing parents with the necessary information for post-secondary and college options. We recently, an example of that, these are kind of the three main community groups that we're focusing on right now. Traditionally underserved groups. Caminos is Latino family group that we've been working with for over a decade. We have NAIPAC, which is our Native American Parent Advisory Council. For any of you that are gonna be at the Da Vinci Fest, please stop by. We'll have an exhibition booth and there will be parents in the district who are native and native elders who are gonna be sharing with the folks that are visiting that. And then most recently, and Board Chair Patachuk, you were a part of kind of the groundbreaking piece of this. We have a collaboration with the Islamic Society of Woodbury East Metro. That's the mosque that was recently built in Afton. And there's kind of three layers to that collaboration. We have students who are working on podcasts, who are going, and these podcasts are gonna be part of professional learning templates that are offered by an organization called the Islamic Resource Group. And we're gonna be holding some of that professional learning for our educators at the mosque in Woodbury. So it's kind of all coming together. So very, very excited about that. South Washington County is right on the line there and they have a lot of their families that attend that mosque and they're extremely interested in doing that family and community engagement, collaborating with us. The next is college and career readiness. And that, I want to share a few highlights about that because that's been a seven-year journey and we've come a long way. So just a few quick highlights as far as the 2018 school year. So currently, we're serving over 200 students that are, you know, identified as being in the academic middle at our three secondary schools. Our graduating class of 2018, 2019, were all accepted to college, 19 kids. Our current senior class is 23. And for the following year, for 2020, 2021, we're gonna have 43 students that we project will be graduating. 42 AP enrollments, so again, these are students that are in the academic middle that are given that stretch opportunity. And with intensive support and individual determination, they're showing success in those classes. And then we've had 98 of our secondary teachers trained in WICOR strategies. And this learning is also being incorporated into our probationary teachers' training. So we're really trying to build structures around evidence-based learning and teaching strategies. And finally, as far as the value add with collaborating with South Washington County. South Washington County's Avid programming began in 2009 and includes Park High School, which is the first Avid National Demonstration High School in Minnesota. They have to go through this kind of rigorous protocol and they've been identified and that's gonna be a resource. It's gonna be readily available to us. So it feels like a very natural fit for both districts. And then finally, student programming. In the student programming piece, we talk about achievement and integration funding. The student programming piece is really about the integration piece. And I think it's really important to note that there is a very concrete value in providing kids integrated learning opportunities. These are the things that South Washington County, they're currently, we're currently doing these things and South Washington County is interested in partnering with us. And I want to just kind of end, in terms of our district's changing racial, ethnic, socioeconomic and linguistic diversity, it's an asset. There was a recent University of Michigan study on integrated learning environments that concluded diversity in academic institutions is essential to teaching all students the human relations and analytic skills they need to thrive and lead in the work environments of the 21st century. So I'm gonna end again by saying that our district's changing racial, cultural, socioeconomic and linguistic diversity is one of our greatest strengths. It's a really exciting time. When I started this work 15 years ago, I was on special assignment and the racial and ethnic demographic of the district was 6% students of color. We are now over 19%. And, you know, with that richness comes all kinds of cultural and learning capital. And we need to make sure that we're incorporating student voices and tapping into that rich capital.
So how many years was it?
What's that?
From the 6% to the 19%?
Uh, would be about nine years, nine to 10 years. Yep. So that's, that's, yeah. And again, the ask is, questions right now? Questions over the next two weeks? Please stop by. Please make appointments to come. I'd love to tour you around and show you the programming. And then in two weeks, on Thursday, I would ask that you take the formal vote because we have to give notification to Equity Alliance by January 31st.
Go ahead.
I'll take...
Thank you. Does this change at all, either how much we receive in funding or how much we're going to spend?
It doesn't. There is one piece. We pay a fee right now to Equity Alliance to be a member because we're a voluntary member. Last year, that was $42,500. So that will be money that we will be able to turn back around and use for program. So that will be money that we will be able to turn back around and use for programming. I do want to be clear on the fact, though, that we're not completely terminating our relationship with Equity Alliance. Equity Alliance has built some wonderful systems and structures. We're ending the formal relationship, which is part of what's called the Joint Powers Agreement, but there are certain programs, particularly in the summer, that are so well-designed, so well-executed, that both South Washington County and our district will be tapping into that programming.
So that was my second question, because I know you've been super passionate about Equity Alliance and its work. Is this what's best for us to partner with Washington County and move away a little bit from?
Absolutely. Yeah. I mean, they're our neighbor, so there's just so much that just makes sense for us to be doing together.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking that, yeah.
So will students have to leave school for anything? If we're partnering with a different district, I mean, are we, do our students stay where they are, or how does that?
Oh, you're talking about, are we contemplating moving Stillwater students to South Washington County?
That's what, yeah.
Yeah, no, no, that's not how that works. It's an opportunity to do joint student programming. So an example would be this summer, there's a camp through Carlson School of Management, and Equity Alliance puts the infrastructure, both the human infrastructure and the logistics in place, and we use funding to buy slots and provide those opportunities for our students. When they're participating in that programming, they get the opportunity to participate with students from Roseville, from White Bear Lake, from Inver Grove Heights. So that's what we mean in terms of integrated learning environments. That's an important point of clarification. Thank you, ma'am.
Can I ask, I know that we've spoken before about this categorical funding, and I think you touched on it, Eric, but that is, we have a vehicle of funding that comes through for the programming that you're involved with. And the shift, the proposed shift to the collaboration with South Washington County, would that involve any separate application to continue that categorical funding?
It's a really good question. So we're, right now, next year, will be the third year of a three-year plan. That plan will remain intact, except for the adaptations that we're going to make in terms of collaborating with South Washington County. What we'll do is we'll align our plan with South Washington County and then report that to the Department of Education. So the language is the same, the programming is the same, that we're mutually agreeing on collaborating with, and the numbers are the same in terms of the students that we're supporting.
So do you anticipate any significant risk that the Department of Education would deny the application for funding?
None whatsoever. Yeah. Yes, Sarah?
Thank you, Chair. Could we get a little bit more, I mean, kind of pigging back off of Director Weisberg's question, can we get a little bit more information about what this partnership really would look like? I mean, I'm in complete support of it, but I think it is a little bit unclear exactly, what will we be doing with them, exactly what will they give us, what will we give them? I mean, you know, is that still being developed, and that's why we don't know more about it? Or can we get more information before we vote on it?
It's possible. It takes, you know, both sides to kind of create the end game. The first piece was to kind of vet the idea in terms of interest, what will ultimately happen. I don't have the exact date, but I'll be back in front of you in mid-February with detail and specificity, and that's when you're approving the budget. And at that point, all those details will be laid out because there's costs associated. What I'm asking you to do right now, and if it, you know, if it feels a little ambiguous, then perhaps we hold off another year and continue our relationship with Equity Alliance. But we won't be able to, South Washington County won't concretely commit to, "This is exactly what it's going to look like," you know, "in the next couple of weeks."
So I guess what I'm clarifying, I guess what I'm asking then is, what we're being asked to vote on now is to exit the EMI Joint Powers Agreement, and we will be, we intend to replace that with this partnership with Washington County, South Washington County. But we don't exactly know all the details of what that's going to look like yet, but that's to come. We will know at some point in the future. Is that correct?
We have the template here. We don't have the detail and specificity in terms of number of students.
And we will in February.
Right.
Probably. Okay, thank you.
Eric, the question I have is this. One, so many of these programs I'm familiar with, and I support, and it's good stuff. The hard thing, and I think other people have asked it in the same way, why the change? I mean, what's going to be different? It's almost like on these slides, you label new, old, and why leave that organization and go this way? It's a change of direction, you go south instead of north. Does that make sense? Do you understand where I'm coming from? What's going to be?
Yeah, I'm just going to, Mike, I'm going to push back on your thinking a little bit about the new and old. That's not necessarily the intention, if it came across that way. There's a couple of reasons. One, it was just two years ago that South Washington County was identified as what's called racially identifiable, which meant we had the option to partner with them. Before that, it was not an option. They were doing some work with St. Paul Public Schools. We're literally, you know, next-door neighbors, and we are at the same professional development. We, you know, have kids in the same student programming, et cetera, et cetera. So it's a great opportunity for us, you know, to connect with our next-door neighbor and build off of systems and structures that are already existing. The two years we spent in dialogue, and I want to thank Director Nolan, too, because he was really integral in facilitating that dialogue with South Washington County. That was all about, do we have shared philosophic ideals, you know, about where we're headed with this work? And in the four areas that I just shared with you, yes, there is a great deal of interconnection.
Okay. Building off of that, who's in the Equity Alliance right now, school districts?
See if I can do this. Currently, Stillwater, Forest Lake, South St. Paul, Inver Grove Heights, White Bear Lake, Roseville. Yep.
Is North St. Paul isn't?
They are not.
Okay. Where do they go, or what do they do?
They have a collaboration with Mata Medai.
Okay. And just those two?
Just those two. They're neighbors.
Yeah, and probably I misspoke when I said new and old, saying, I'm trying to say, okay, status quo, future, you know what I mean? That's what I'm trying to get a hand on, because a lot of this, this is wonderful stuff. You've presented to us before, we've heard it before, and I'm saying, I'm not completely clear in my mind what's going to be gained or what might be lost, and I'm trying to identify that.
Do you want to respond to that?
That's a, I mean, I'm not sure how to respond to that. I would, again, push back a little bit on the status quo.
Present.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the entire time we've been collaborating with Equity Alliance, it's about, you know, building systems and structures. And really shifting from a purely programmatic model to a model that incorporates what's called universal design. So with those WICOR strategies, I think that's a really great concrete example. When we started that work seven years ago, those WICOR strategies were available to about 25 kids in an Avid elective classroom. You know, as a result of teachers, you know, taking a look at that and saying, "Hey, these strategies would be good for all of our students," you know? We were able to, when we shifted to the middle school model, our middle school principals made that a priority, and they had great help from their teaching staff, to build a course that focuses on providing our kids with writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and critical reading. So that's a great example of achievement and integration funding not being for any particular stakeholder group, but having the potential to complement and support the systems and structures that exist within an educational institution.
Okay, so the funding that we receive is to close the achievement gap and reduce segregation. And I am wondering how we are doing that because we are not closing the gap here. So that's one. And the funding also allows you to be very creative also with socioeconomics, and I'm wondering how we are reaching the, just the plain old at-risk youth we have in our district.
So two pieces. I'm going to caution new board members, as you look at data, there's a big difference between data-driven and data-informed. And, you know, I would even ask our high school students, a standardized test score does not tell the entire story. The work that we're doing with equity and integration programming does three things as best we're able. It creates learning environments that have authentic relationships, high student engagement, vigorous instruction, and vigorous is different than rigorous. We're not just talking about lecture-based instruction. We're talking about responsibly adapting instruction to cater to students who have different learning styles, who have different communication styles. And the ultimate kind of philosophic ideal is, you know, limitless learning potential. Simply using, you know, standardized test scores from small, underserved stakeholder groups as the lone metric to measure the efficacy of the programming, I would caution you against.
I know, but that's just what it is we do right now, and so that is what the money is specified for.
Yeah, and we, and just to be clear, we have a very positive working relationship with the Minnesota Department of Education. I've been seated in this position for 15 years, and last year, we, oftentimes, it's kind of this kind of ping-pong game of we submit, and they say, "No, you need to adapt." And, you know, we're in a place now where they respect the programming. Our professional developers, Teresa Lewis and Bonnie Dahlhauser, presented the statewide integration leaders conference. So we're in a good place. They're saying we're doing what we're supposed to be doing, I guess is what I'm saying.
One other thing that might be helpful, Chair Patachuk, is that in the past, Equity Alliance really focused on helping connect districts with like needs. So if you were doing some cultural competency work and another district wanted to do the same, they would connect you so you could have more perspectives around the table. Now we have a partner right next door who we can do that with. So that's one difference. The other difference is that Equity Alliance has moved away from one choice for districts to many. And one of the things that they do now is offer kind of a menu of different things that are available. And so a school district can choose those and opt in for the things that are helpful and align with the needs of their district and their mission. Where in the past, if you were a member, everything would be on the board, and you'd kind of pick and choose no matter what, you'd pay that one fee. Now there's more flexibility with that. So when you talk about, what do we gain, what do we lose? We gain some flexibility in choosing what we want. We also gain a partner who's right next door. Instead of as great a partners as they've been, when you try to go across to Roseville or places that are further, sometimes it's a little bit difficult to make those partnerships happen.
Thank you.
First, I'd like to say, thank you for coming and speaking on this. So you mentioned prior to that, like, if the board chooses you, they can change, they put, if the board chooses you, they can like push back in the change in official partnership, like a year or two. Can you speak on any of the negatives that come with waiting?
With, you mean, remaining seated with Equity Alliance and not moving to South Washington County? I would say the readiness level, you know, collaboration at the highest levels can be kind of a complex endeavor. Right now, again, after two years of dialogue with Director Nolan and others, they're ready to go. You know, we've kind of identified kind of the four main areas, kind of a big picture philosophic ideal, and we're ready to move. If we were to stay with Equity Alliance, we would still tap into some of those products and services, but it doesn't have the potential for the systemic and structural piece that exists with South Washington County. It's a really good question. Sarah?
Can you explain, I think what you said is that South Washington County schools just became a racially identifiable district?
Right.
Can you explain what is that?
They have 20% or more students of color than our school district we touch.
So the line is 20%?
Right.
And we're at 19%?
Right.
So we're very close to being that?
No.
If I remember correctly.
20%, for them to be a racially identifiable district for us to collaborate with, they have to have 20% or more students of color than we do.
Oh, they have to have 20% more than we do? Oh, I see. Okay, so, because I was, what I was trying to get at was, if I remember correctly, in all of the research I've done in the past about, you know, this categorical funding, we are a volunteer district because we didn't have a partner that shared a boundary with us, a district boundary.
That's exactly right.
Right? And so our partner school was Roseville, and there's districts in between those two. So that's why we had to be a volunteer instead of, I can't remember what that middle one was, like a partner school or a, you know, so there's the racially identified district, and then there's a middle one that's like a partner. I can't remember. And then there's a volunteer category. There's like the three different categories. I guess what I'm trying to get at, am I not making any sense?
No, you're making a lot of sense.
Okay, so tell me if I'm off on the wrong path here, but does that change if we're, I mean, so the obvious advantage here is that we have a boundary neighbor school to partner with, and that's always better because they're neighbors. We share the same streets and the same, you know, a lot of the same communities. So that's better than having a partner that's further away.
Absolutely.
So that would be, in my mind anyways, that would be the biggest advantage for partnering with a neighbor rather than staying with EMI and partnering with districts that are further away.
That's a very valid point.
Does it change what our requirements are, since we would change from being a volunteer district to more of a partner district? Does that change anything in terms of MDE, in terms of what we have to do to receive the funds? Does that make us in better standing in their mind, as far as, does it give us more flexibility with what we do? You know, does it change anything?
The Department of Education, Ann Parks, who is the person I collaborate with at the department, has encouraged us to pursue this relationship, you know, for several years. So, yeah, it's.
That's kind of what I was thinking.
Yeah. These are really good questions. Again, my humble perspective, but it's definitely in our advantage, you know, to our advantage for a bunch of different reasons.
In the past, too, didn't MDE try to withhold funds from us? And it went to court where they said they were wrong, MDE was wrong, and that they had to continue to fund us in the past?
We've, we've had to, you know, there's times where we submit our budget, and then there are questions, and they don't formally approve it for a while, but there's never been a period in my tenure where funding has been formally withheld, that I'm aware of.
Okay. Last question I have. How will this affect the Equity Alliance? I mean, the group seems to be diminishing in size.
In terms of.
Number of schools?
Perhaps in terms, again, and this is Eric speaking for Eric as a staff member of Stillwater Area Public Schools, I'm not speaking for the collaborative. I don't, the ending of the formal relationship is one piece, but Equity Alliance has done an exquisite job of developing high-quality learning opportunities, both for educators and for students. And WMEP, the West Metro Integration Collaborative, they folded, and there are WMEP districts now that are very interested in collaborating with Equity Alliance and currently tapping into that. Equity Alliance is in the process of hiring a new executive director. I imagine that person is going to have a very forward-thinking vision, and I think Equity Alliance is going to be here for a long, I hope they are, for a long time to come.
Is this going to be detrimental to them as an institution?
Well, I mean, in terms of the, ending the formal relationship, there's, you know, $42,000 potentially that they don't have to work with. But again, I can assure you, I mean, as long as you're approving our plans, we're going to continue to engage in programming with Equity Alliance because they have the systems, the structures, and they're good for our kids.
But what's on our things later is assignment of committees. So if in January 17th, we vote to not continue our membership with them, it would make sense to fill that slot.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you, Eric. Thank you. Now we're on school board committee assignments, excuse me, and working groups. And you should have before you a corrected list. And typically, past practice has been that you, as members of the board, would look at those. And typically, past practice has been that you, as members of the board, would look at those, decide what your priorities are, what you would like to be on, what you would like to be doing, and to submit those to the board chair. And, uh, here's, here's what I'd like to propose to think about a little bit. Number one, if there's anything on that list that you have questions on, what does that working group do? Or what does that assignment do? And you feel comfortable just to ask us, and I'll ask other members who've been on those groups, uh, to respond. Or if it's more comfortable to do that apart from this meeting, feel free to contact myself or, or any others. Uh, I would like to propose this as kind of a timeline, if you would. Is that if you get that to me either electronically, or Barb would put it in my folder by, say, next Monday at noon. Does that give you enough time to go through those? And, and what I may do too is just call on a couple others. I know the decision is mine, but I may say to some other of you, gee, I'm a little blindsided on this. Tell me. So, tell me this too. Put priorities. This is what I'd like to be on. This is, and number them. And then also, what you may wanna tell me that I don't know is why you feel that's good for us collectively. Your expertise or your experience or whatever, that would be useful for me as well. Tina?
I would like to start a conversation about bringing back building liaisons, and I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that.
Okay, yeah, again, I think what we'll do on that is, treat that as a separate item for consideration. And as we plan agendas for future meetings, I definitely will put that on there. Okay? Sarah?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I think that's a great idea. I agree with you. I think we should be talk, you know, we could talk about what that might look like. Um, and maybe that's something we can give to the community engagement group to kind of sort through and figure out pros and cons and maybe a strategy for that. Would that make sense?
Okay, and we'll put that on the agenda, and that's a, another good suggestion.
Okay.
Again, what, one of the things I, I would like to say too is that, one of the notions, and tonight I'm speaking as an individual, and I'm only one of seven, and so this has to go to the entire board for consideration. One of the things I, I'd like to look at is some of the responsibilities for the committees are gonna be a little bit different, I hope, and I hope collectively, we can look at that. In particular, one area I wanna look at is the finance committee. You know, one of the things you know that I've done, and I've done this for several meetings, is I've separated disbursements and then gone and met with Kristin's, and then I will do that hopefully for the last time tonight, but it may go on, is that, one, I think how we spend our money is pretty important. And I wanna increase the viewership on that as well. Plus, I wanna, I wanna build our credibility more with the public. Now, that's not to cast aspersions on anything that's gone before as much as to say, I believe very strongly in transparency. So one of the things I'm looking for, and Kristin and I just touched on this very, very briefly, is one, I would like to take some of the disbursement, and I would like to look at that procedure and put it as an action invite, uh, uh, item. And then some of it's automatic. You gotta pay those, you gotta do those. But what I would like to do is separate, is to have perhaps one meeting by that group a month. And it would be designed to be a short meeting. And whoever the three members are, and we know one of those for sure, 'cause that's the way it's set up as the treasurer, is they would meet with the finance director and they would go through disbursements. And they would look at any that catch your eye and talk about it. What is it? What's it for? Et cetera. In most cases, that's a formality. And then they would bring that as a little background of particular items to our regular meeting. And when we get to those action items. Plus, it would tip off, uh, the finance director a little bit, uh, where we're the sensitive. And sometimes it's going to be the higher-priced items.
Mm-hmm.
And, and so that, but, but again, that's not for sure. I would say, given that kind of structure, is something I know that Director Stivlin has mentioned in the past, and I would like to see us do, is put out a monthly, these are the meetings that are held. One for finance, perhaps another, uh, for, uh, hirings and placement. And that meeting would be open to any other board member who wanted to attend. And it's also published so that any member of the public who wanted to come and sit and watch could do that. And the people who were on the committee would run the meeting. And typically, if another board member such as myself came, it would be largely a viewer. Now, in some cases with permission, they could speak or express. But it's not designed to be something that's going to go on for any length of time. We look at 30 minutes, perhaps an hour. And, and again, try to keep to that. But again, more visibility, more transparency. And, and even if, like tonight, one of the things we have is a list of meetings that we're gonna have, what I would like to see is that that become institutionalized. Maybe it's the second Tuesday of every month or something this is done. So I say, as you go to sign up for committees, know that a little bit. But I would leave it up to the committee membership to determine of what those dates and, and what that structure would be. But again, at this point, I'm not asking you to decide on that tonight, but I'm saying as you go to fill out that, gee, I would like to serve on this committee or do that, keep that in mind. And if you've got other innovative ideas that you feel would help meet that need, uh, please let me know as well, and we'll try to incorporate that. Having said that, are there any other questions you have on committees or committee assignments or working groups? Shelley?
Well, I was just gonna, another recommendation is just if we can talk about opening all the working group meetings that can be open, posting all of them.
Correct. Thank you.
Um, one question I have is associated with the, uh, Metropolitan School District meeting, or meetings that go on, I believe, once a month for those larger groups. So I know I attended one, um, last month, and I thought it was a great opportunity to like speak during it as well.
And you guys did a great job.
Is there a way that we can incorporate, this is probably, you're gonna have to have a conversation with them as well, incorporate a student representative on there as well?
Ooh, that's a good question. There is a meeting tomorrow, and Denise and I probably both will be there. And what we can do is perhaps mention it to their executive director or something, uh, to talk about.
Yeah, and I actually think that it probably is already answered for us because there are districts who bring a student each time. Sometimes it's a revolving, not always the same student, but they bring someone with them each time, so I'm sure that will be fine.
Yeah, and, and time is an issue because the meeting itself starts at 7:30.
And then runs until nine-ish.
And there, there is a breakfast, but you gotta be there at 7 for the breakfast. So that means that if you're driving from Woodbury or places like that, uh, it's long. Uh, what they're very, very good at is at 9:30 generate the meetings all over.
Right.
But thank you. A good suggestion. Jennifer?
I just had a question. So, about, I like the conversation that's being had. Are you talking about, can you clarify, are you asking us to just ponder ways that we can improve or add or tweak the group? Um, because some of this seems to be teetering on change in policy as well. So, um, that needs to be part of the communication and would need a formal action, um, mechanism, you know? I, I just wanted to point that out, and I don't know if you're looking at, you brought up a lot of ideas, and I don't know if this is something that we take as like a, a learning session or, or work session, I should say.
Or even a retreat.
Something like that, retreat, just so we can really kind of, because, um, there's a lot of things that you brought up there, so maybe we can flush some of that out.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great point.
Thank you.
Yep, I agree. I, I, I think you're absolutely right with that. We need to maybe look at our policies to make sure we're still in line with what those say, or maybe make changes if we need to. I know we do have an orientation meeting that we need to put together at some point in the near future, and maybe that's something we could put on the agenda to, to maybe discuss a little bit, how we want those working groups to go. And at that point, we would probably have them all laid out, you know, who's on which one, so that might be helpful.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, seeing none, let's go on to action items, and we have a established 2019 calendar of meetings. Do we have a motion?
Some moved.
Jennifer moved. Is there a second?
I'll second. We're jumping right on.
There a second?
Yeah, before we, before we vote, I just have, um, a couple of comments, requests. We can see if we have the, some, um, some of these long before I decided to even throw my hat in the ring. Um, these, these dates are, are, I, I had already set some dates. And I'm, I'm just wondering, looking at the, um, at the proposed calendar, um, if we would consider, uh, uh, just a couple one or two changes here in, in the spring, and there's a bit of a rationale to it as well. Um, the, the, uh, February 14th meeting and the March 28th meeting. One proposal might be to move the February 14th meeting to February 7th. Uh, the rationale for that, for the broader public, would be that, uh, as it currently stands, uh, there are four weeks between the January 17th meeting and the February 14th meeting. Moving that to February 7th would reduce that to three weeks.
Mm-hmm.
And then, uh, an, another change would be, uh, February 28th, moving that to February 21st. That would again then make it, uh, two weeks from, in, in, you know, my proposal here, from February 7th to February 21st. It'd be two weeks there, and again then, two weeks following that to the March 7th meeting. And then the last change would be March 28th to March 21st. That would then separate it by two weeks from March 7th to March 28th. The, the, the conflict that I know I have personally, and I'm only one board member, but is, uh, the March 28th meeting. But it'd be some proposal to maybe make those more evenly spaced, staggered, as we go through, because I think there is some unevenness there.
Okay, so here's what I hear you saying. I make sure I got it correct. Move February 14th through the 7th.
Correct.
Move the 28th to the 21st.
Yes.
And then March 7th and 28th, you've got a conflict, but you're not suggesting a change.
I, what I'm suggesting is March 28th, move that to March 21st. So I, I believe that, that the district has spring break, uh, following March 7th. I believe it begins on March 9th.
Okay.
Well, Saturday, March 11th.
So let me ask you this. Do you wanna propose that as an amendment?
Uh, well, yes, I would propose that as a, as an amendment to this.
Okay, is there, is there a second?
Second.
Is seconds discussion? Shelley?
I appreciate that because I had noticed that for weeks, and I knew we were gonna have to do something there. Are there any other district things that this is going to conflict with?
Um, I wanted to just comment, the Mar, the, I'm glad you brought up the March 28th. I'm also out of town on the March 28th, as are our two student representatives. It's a big, uh, it's the orchestra trip to, um, Boston, Boston. And, uh, so I, I, I was gonna actually bring that up and say, if, if need be, I can Skype or whatever it is, but I'm definitely out on the 28th, so I would be in favor of the amendment. And our students will be very busy playing their instruments and whatnot, not having any fun at all, so, um, just a comment.
Other comments? Questions? Sarah?
Okay, so wait, we, we're, we're, we made a motion to talk about this. I was gonna talk about a different date, so maybe we should just stick with this. I think I would support these changes as, as you've listed. February 7th, um, February 21st, and March 21st.
Yes, that's what I have.
Yes.
Yeah. I have other changes I wanna bring up, but I'll, I'll wait. Maybe we make them separately.
Okay.
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 Any other comments or questions about the amendment? Seeing none, we are voting on the amendment. Uh, those three changes, everybody got those? So you know what you're voting on? All those in favor signify by saying aye, and please raising your right hand.
Aye.
The amendment passes unanimously. You have the four.
So, second one is, um, in years past, we have, um, typically tried to get down to one meeting in July and one meeting in December. I know that it's changed maybe somewhat because we're doing disbursements differently, but I wonder if there's some way we could consider trying to figure out a way to do that so that we would have only one meeting in July. Any thoughts? Any, I mean, I'm open to other people's thoughts, obviously.
Can I, well, I wonder if we could just do a morning for just disbursements?
Mm-hmm.
For each of those months, and then we just say that's all we're doing and, that's an option.
December 21st.
That's good. Yeah.
Or maybe, well, and I'm just throwing out, suggesting, maybe you just cut it in the middle. What, what I'm afraid of what happens, and, and I think some of you will agree, those disbursement meetings tend to grow.
Well, right, so we'd have to be a little more firm on that we're just doing disbursements, but I think we do pretty much have to meet about every two weeks in order to approve those. But if we could just do that, if we could be disciplined enough to just have that.
Well, what I'm thinking in particular, Shelley, and again, it's, it's your comment, not mine. Suppose you cut the difference between the 11th and the 25th, and you went about the 18th or something like that in one meeting in July.
I don't think that that's going to work for disbursements. Uh, Director, or Chair Potacek is asking Director Hoheizl if, um, we could split the difference between the July and the December meetings and have something in between. But I think we need to have, for disbursements, have it every two, or can we do that?
Well, you can do whatever. The challenge is, is, um, when, when you receive your board packet, you're, that information is being cut off essentially a week before the board meeting. The lag time now is, is a month. And that is, um, you, you're probably looking at decent finance charges, um, or, or people who just really want to get paid. A month is a long time to have invoices sitting out there. Um, and I would be also very careful of that we, you know, you get into that window and we start pushing against some auditing things too, as far as timely payment. So, um, i- i- if you were asking my opinion, I would say you're, you would be better off to do as best you can every two, two and a half weeks. And if it's, you know, I don't know if you have the ability to just designate what the meeting's for, but to, to just split the difference gives us a big lag in there for getting checks.
Too much.
Yeah.
But the other changes that were suggested in the amendment, those would work out fine?
They work out better.
Work better. Okay, good.
Would you, Director Stivlin, would you like to consider the 8:00 AM on one of the dates, or is that not, you know, one of the ones in July or December?
Well, I think if we're gonna meet and we're gonna be here, and if there are issues that we wanna address, I mean, if we're gonna have a meeting, we might as well let it be a meeting. But if we could try to keep it light, keep the agenda light.
Well, what I'm thinking too is that perhaps one of those, we give it an asker's, we hope that it would be just disbursements.
Mm-hmm. And, and that's the, the chair's fine. That's, can make that.
So, which would be?
Yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to ask the question, and I think I knew the answer before, that, you know, this disbursements, way of doing things is kind of, kind of ties us, ties us here. Um, can't let it go too long.
All right, so, here's what I hear then. You tell me, and if you don't like it, I'm okay with not liking it. On the twen, on the 11th, we give that asker's, and then we do the same thing with December 19th. And then parentheses for that asker's is we write dispersment.
Okay. And if a few other things get added, that's fine too. As we know, they probably will. Do you wanna keep that as an evening then? Do you wanna keep it at 6 o'clock, or do you want morning? I'm fine leaving it at 6 o'clock, I guess. I don't think it makes any difference. It's about, you know.
Well, and the only thing, what we're trying to do here is give people predictability.
Yeah.
That they have flexibility.
Mm-hmm. Yep, that's fine. That sounds good. I'm happy with that.
Okay.
I don't even think we need a motion on that, really.
Let's take that as, well, let's take this as a package now.
Just a rec, just a request from the chair.
Okay, request from the chair.
I guess.
Chair's open, if you don't like it, tell me.
Um, I have another thing I would like to bring up too. If that's okay, are we done with this?
All right, can we go with the dates and then we'll?
Okay.
Or go ahead. All right, can we go with the dates, and then we'll, or go ahead. What's your other thing, please?
Well, I, I would like to open up the question of whether or not this space is working the best for us, for our board meetings, and whether or not we should consider moving, moving our meetings back to Stillwater City Hall. We had a good working partnership with them. The space was free. I don't know. I preferred it myself. And I just am wondering if that's something anybody else is willing to, or interested in looking at.
I'd be willing to look at that.
I would, too.
Jennifer?
Can I just ask a procedural question again? Do we need to vote on the overall calendar? We voted on the amendments. Do we need to go back and vote on the entirety of the school calendar, or not? And I'm honestly just making sure.
The reason I'm asking is just because it has a location on here. So if we want to vote on the dates, we can do that, but then this is, the location is also on here. So if we're voting on this whole document, that's why I'm raising the question now.
So you're suggesting come January 17th, be back at City Hall? That's what you're making your motion?
Well, I'm asking the question.
Okay.
I'm wanting to know what other people think.
I'm not sure she's making a motion.
Okay, okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know what it involves. I mean, maybe they won't let us come back. I don't know. I would think that they would, but I don't know where things are at. I would like to know, you know, more about if that's still a possibility. And is that something that other board members would prefer? Or is that, are we fine with it like this? Just a question.
Being up here and being out there, this is not a really great setting for the community. And I even struggle hearing and seeing here. I'm not a huge fan, myself. I think I would like to pursue and see if we have, if it's even available or still offered.
I guess I just, we'd have to think about the pros and cons of, you know, making an abrupt change for, just for public awareness. We've started to educate the community about the new location for, for our board meetings. And, you know, I think that, no reason not to discuss it, but maybe would hesitate about making a very quick move.
Yeah, I mean, that's why I didn't want to make a motion and have us vote on it now. I'm just raising the question at this time, and I'd be open to other people's thoughts and ideas about it.
Shelley?
So I, I agree with that, and I agree with that. I think, I would say for the next meeting, we would still be here, but could we have more information at the next meeting? That would answer those questions. Can we come back? Is there a cost? And really, because we only sit here, I'm glad to have that perspective, but I don't know what it looks like or sounds like. So I think that's something, if we could have that brought back to us at the next meeting, and then we can make that decision, would be good.
So what I hear is this. One, we want to know, is there cost? Another question would seem to be, is there availability with these dates that we're going to vote on? Knowing that the dispersments would probably be, those two meetings would probably be at the central office. Typically, that's what we've done. Any other questions that I've left out? Because we're asking staff to go and find this out.
I think, yeah, we would need to know about the, back to the method that we use to get our meetings would be back to Granicus and get that information as well. The audiovisual component, you know, I don't know. I mean, I'm, this is, I'll have 10 more questions later, probably, but, yeah.
And if I understand right, we shared the cost of Granicus with Stillwater City Hall, so when we moved out, we actually caused them to have the full brunt of that cost?
I'll let Chris speak to it.
Is that right?
We split the cost as far as the hardware when it was first installed, and that's in place. However, my understanding from working with Granicus is that they were recommending an upgrade to all of that hardware, because it was getting very dated. And then each entity paid their own ongoing fee. So we paid for our portion of being able to continue to broadcast, and they'll continue to pay theirs, but they didn't have to take on ours. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Which was $4,000. And then I would just add, too, there is not a cost to rent City Hall.
Okay.
Public entity to public entity is free of charge.
Okay.
So I think maybe rather than belabor it tonight, we could bring it back at the next meeting and have all those questions answered.
Good. I agree. Okay, so what we're looking at is the motion, were these dates, I believe, with the changes that we noted in the amendment? Do you have all the information you need, or do you have other questions? Can we move the question here, then?
Sorry. I guess I'm just wondering, then, if we, if we have this discussion, then do we do, then do we need to bring the calendar back for formal vote? So we're going to, just, just point of conversation. So we vote on this as is tonight in entirety with the amendments, and then have the discussion at the next meeting, and then an action item in February, on February 7th? Is that what we're talking about?
That's the way I would take it, is that it's to get answers to those questions and to have the discussion at our next meeting. And the discussion that we're talking about there is location.
Okay.
And what we're voting on tonight is the present location in this list of meetings. But that location could change as a result of the next meeting. But the next, the very next meeting, which is January 17th, will be here. Makes sense?
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Barbara?
I'm sorry, I do have a question. For the next meeting and voting on the location, if you will, should I bring something that has the two dispersment meetings at Central Services listed?
Yes.
Right, so are we changing the location at this time for those two dispersment meetings? Because we, right now, they're listed as Oak Park Building.
I think that's what Barbara just asked.
Okay. So at this time, we are officially changing the location of those two meetings?
Yeah, that's part of this present motion.
Right. So that would be the July 11th and July, or December 19th?
Yes. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, all of those in favor of the present proposal, please signify by saying yes or aye and raising your right hand, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passed unanimously. And we are on to be establishment, 2019, board member salaries, board chair, that's me. And you have two documents that you've been given for this. One is the list of the salaries, I think.
It's one more.
And the other one that you've been given, or Barb got out to us today, was historically what has been the director's salary and what has been the board chair's salary from 2007 to 2018. Questions, comments, ideas?
I was just going to make a motion to approve the 2019 board member salaries.
I'll second.
Second. Sarah, you have a second? Discussion?
I think it's appropriate at this time to keep the salaries exactly as they are. We're in a time of trying to find savings in the budget, and it has been suggested from multiple sources that we should consider, you know, dropping the cost of the salary. I think in looking at these, this list and the comparisons, we are already on the low end of salaries compared to other districts nearby us. I think it's a responsible number. I think this is hard, hard work, what we're doing up here, and I think this is a really big money to be paid, at least at this time. I know in our meeting about the budget, we did talk about and voted on trying to find a $5,000 savings from the school board budget. So I'm, I don't know, I don't know that we need to make a motion at this time, but I would like to just say at this time, we keep the salaries the same, but maybe we consider giving up our mileage reimbursements and looking at that as a place where we might save some money. Instead of cutting the salary, looking at mileage as being something that might work. I don't know what other people think about that.
Jennifer?
I think it's a great idea, and, you know, maybe we can tweak it a little bit and find some other areas. And I'm assuming that'll come up in the upcoming, you know, we've got some work to do still, so maybe that can come up. But yeah, I agree. I support that.
Should we, at this point, and again, posing this as a question, because it seems to me there's two issues here. One is this present proposal and these salaries. The other is, as we all know, we've got to come up, if we're going to match a 5% balance, fund balance, which I strongly support, we're going to have a meeting, where we're going to come up with future ways to do that. So we've got to revisit that. It would seem to me mileage, at that point, might be more appropriate as part of that meeting. And to come up not only with mileage, because I think Kristin, off the top of her head, said that would save probably about $1,000, maybe more. So I'm saying, you got to find $4,000 somewhere else, and we'll do that. But again, tonight, let's just restrict it to these present salaries and practice as we've been doing to this point. Is that okay? Other questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye and raising your right hand.
Aye.
Opposed? That was unanimous. And, let's see. We are on to board member updates. Chairperson report?
I think he wanted to do dispersments.
You're right. Kristin, go ahead.
You go ahead, I think. This is your questions on dispersment.
This is the dispersment that we're going to do.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. It's going to take a while. No, I'm not talking about my question. I'm talking about my issues. Dispersments, as I mentioned to you, this is for 12/22/18 to January 4th today, or rather tomorrow, seems like almost tomorrow. And so Kristin and I met and talked of these, and these are some that I wanted to make you aware of. If you look under dispersments, page five, and if you go down to the item under NAC Mechanical and Electrical, and it had to do with Oakland Middle School and to installing a chlorine pump for domestic water, and the cost was $16,779. And so Kristin, if you give a little more explanation on that one?
Absolutely. We have, this year, for the entirety of the school year, we have struggled with water at Oakland Middle School in that there was, it had tested for bacteria being in the water. And so we had shut down the water fountains that were able, for the kids to drink. We provided bottled water, and continued to kind of troubleshoot to figure out where the source of bacteria was coming from. And essentially, the answer is to install a chlorine pump to filter through the waters, to make sure that it's, there's no bacteria present, or at least a safe level of bacteria that's present within, in the water for people, occupants of that building to drink. And that, so this system resolves that water issue.
Okay, thank you. The second item was TA Schiffsky and Sons, and then it was down as patching Stillwater Area High School and Stillwater Middle School. And this is actually, has to do with parking lots.
It is. It's actually just patching potholes. It's, unfortunately, it's part of, part of the deal you get when you live in Minnesota. And so we have done some work at both the high school and Stillwater Middle School to cover up the potholes that existed.
And the total cost of that was $8,148?
Correct.
Then if you go to, let's go down to page six, and we'll go to Zayo Fiber Group LLC, PDN, December 20, 2018, $13,608.
So Zayo is our fiber lines. This is what we pay monthly for a lease cost. It's to all of our sites, essentially to provide Wi-Fi and different things that connect all of our buildings. It's our, it's our monthly lease cost. Zayo happens to be the group. This is the gross cost. We do receive some reimbursement in E-rate. I don't actually have that exact dollar amount, but this is what we do for fiber lines.
Okay, thank you. And then the last one on page six, Center for Responsive Schools, Responsive Classroom Training, December 11th and 12th, and January 23rd and 24th. And this was for elementary, and it was $21,000.
Yes, so the $21,000 is for the PD session for 30 staff members at the elementary level. Although it's, and it's coded to consultants, it does come from our professional development budget. So all elementary certified full-time equivalents need to be trained. All principals have been trained, so we're in the process of working through people receiving that training.
Thank you. And then we go to page seven, and I'm going to go to Innovative Office Solutions, which is a common vendor for us. And the number on it is 3351183. And it says, "See attached quote," and that got my attention, because I didn't see an attached quote. And the total amount was $1,2250.
Actually, the, Mike, I might have heard you wrong. The dollar amount was $2,250.20, correct?
Okay, okay, thank you.
And that is for the Early Childhood Building. This is money that will be coming from the Community Ed Fund. And I want to say, I think I still see a net shoes, but I want to say it's for a conference room at the Early Childhood Building.
And it's for chairs and work surface? Yeah, okay, thank you. And then the next one had to do with NAC Mechanical and Electrical, which we saw above, and this was at Lily Lake School. And it was a drinking fountain and a toilet, and it was $6,836.
So this was part, this was a planned expenditure. We replaced the drinking fountain with a bottle filler. And while NAC was out, we also worked on a toilet that was not planned. Kind of the efficiency of having a contractor on site. We had thrown the toilet in. But the drinking fountain in and of itself was planned, and we made it a bottle filler.
Life in a, in a school district. And then we had on page eight, Summit Companies. And Summit, Kristin has informed me, means fire.
Fire.
Companies remit and replace fire alarm controller, $9,867. And that was at Rutherford.
I'm glad you mentioned that, Mike, because as you see, there's particular vendors in certain areas. Summit is our fire, our fire systems. And at Rutherford, the, if you will, the brains in the detection and notification system was not working properly. So we had to replace essentially the main component of the detection and notification system for our fire system at Rutherford.
And then pages start again, and this is the third set of pages, and it has to do with Innovative Office Solutions Furniture for Stillwater Area High School Media Center. And the cost was $26,615.
This was a decision made by Principal Bach. He had saved up some partial funding from last year's, his last year capital allocation, so the '17, '18 capital allocation, and then part of the money this year to make some renovations within his media center at the high school.
And again, when we talk media center for old timers, that means libraries.
Yes.
Good, thank you. And then we had a, oh, the other two, I'm not going to go into at this point, in the interest of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so, we're down to Chairperson Report, and relatively new to this chair, Barbara?
Did we take a vote on the dispersments?
Oh, you're right, action item. So, also, I'll move it, that we support, pass the dispersment. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconds? Any further discussion, questions, comments?
I just had a quick question. Can I bring up one? Or no?
Well, typically it'd be no, but if Kristin knows it off the top of her head, she may.
I will try. Just page, I think it's two, three. Field Environmental Consulting Drinking Water Testing, $1,665, and then for $15,008.
That, that would still be what we were dealing with at the Oakland.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And thank you. Okay, any other questions, comments on dispersments? Seeing none?
Can I, just for clarification, that, that too with Field Environmental, so that not only is Oakland Director Weisberg, that would be, that is in addition, that is a follow-up to our lead-in water testing at, I don't know if all sites were done, but there were particular sites that we did follow-up testing, and that would be a component of that as well.
So, other schools besides Oakland?
I believe so. There were three invoices listed, and given the dollar amount of the last one, when I saw the $15,000, my, my indication, I'm inclined to believe that was also, I want to say, this building was involved. Afton, there was, Lake Elmo had a faucet, there were various faucets throughout the district that would have received another round of testing, and I'm inclined to believe, given the size of the bill, that included that as well.
It says on there, eight buildings.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Kristin. Thank you, Elizabeth. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your right hand, please.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. And now, we are to Board Member Updates, and this will be brief. Chairperson Report, I have none. This is relatively new position here for me. Board Member Reports. And Jennifer, how about if we start with you?
All right, thank you. I just have a really, really brief thing, and I, I was hoping that Abdullah Zeez was still here, but I wanted to give a quick update on BISA, which is the program that started about a year ago at the high school. Profay Carter, Mrs. Carter spearheaded this program, and I think we've all at the board table heard a little bit about it, and I might send you all a link just to get you more informed or update you for the new board members. But BISA stands for Basic Institute for Zonal African Advancement, and it's basically, it's an initiative to kind of fight the tragedy of child labor, child trafficking, and domestic in targeted African countries, starting with Nigeria. And basically, in a nutshell, what it is, is it's a sponsorship program where you sponsor a child because they have to pay for their education. So, you sponsor a child from wherever they're at, and all, all the way up. It started with two students, and the, these kids at this high school are just amazing. I'm a little biased, my daughter's heavily involved in it, but they're very passionate. It's a great group of kids. It's a wonderful organization, and you'd be so proud if you, once you get to know more about it. But I just wanted to let everyone know that we are up to, actually, my family sponsored a child. We gave that to ourselves for the holidays. I know Director Hepner did as well. So, we're up to, they are up to 10 families. So, just in one year, 10 families are being sponsored, children for their education, so. I just want to give an update and kudos to those pretty fantastic kids.
So, if somebody, listener, viewer, wanted to help out?
Yeah, so, good, thank you for that. I was just looking online, BISA.org is the name of the, is how you, B-I-Z-A-A.org is how you, you can look that up. And also, like I said, Ms. Profay Carter is, she's really spearheading that, so you could contact her as well, or I know quite a bit about it, too, so it's just a, it's, it's a wonderful thing, and it, like I, I've said before, that these kids, it ma, it makes them think much larger than themselves, and that's a, it's a gift, so.
And if you do have a high school student, it's on Fee Pay, so that's one way to donate if you have a high school.
Oh, yeah, yeah, thank you for that. Yeah, you're right. Thank you, Shelley.
Shelley, say that again, please.
Well, you have to have, I think it's only under the high school students, but when you go onto Fee Pay, where we pay for activities, there's BISA, there's places where we can make donations right on there, but I don't know that it's on elementary students. I don't think it is, or for the general public.
Yeah, I don't know. That's something to think about.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, that's it.
Sarah?
I just have a couple of things really quick. I just want to, Denise mentioned it earlier, that Da Vinci Fest is this Saturday from 1:00 to 5:00 at the high school. This is my favorite, that's lots of people's favorite thing, it's my favorite thing we have every year. I'm super excited. I know this year's gonna be better than ever. I will be there. I'm looking forward to seeing Andy Weaver's Hawks and all kinds of other stuff. Also, yes, so Da Vinci Fest, go to it, it's really awesome. And then the other thing I wanted to just quick mention, we do need to get orientation for our new board members on the calendar. We do have some things we should meet and talk about, and the list is getting longer as the days go by. So, that's the only thing I just wanted to put in there.
Shelley?
I have nothing, thank you.
Tina?
I don't have a lot. I'll be going to Da Vinci Fest as well. But one thing I kind of want to talk about is maybe next, next meeting, maybe try to get on the agenda. I would like to do a teacher questionnaire as just kind of, to feel out how the teachers are in the district, just kind of stepping into everything, seeing where everybody's at, few really simple questions. I don't want any tracking or any, I don't want to know who the responses are from, kind of, you know, what's working for you as a teacher, what isn't working, and how we can better support you, your students, very general. And maybe we could send that out through the district. I did talk with Josiah a little bit about it, and I don't know if any other board members would have anything they would want to discuss about that, but I, just something vague and kind of a general idea as to where the teachers are and they feel their students are at in the district, so.
Thank you. What I have as far as the Chair Report is listening to all of you tonight, I've got three items down that you want for consideration on agenda. One, teacher questionnaire, and maybe Mark or Liz will have something additional. School liaisons, whether we do that or not, and the other was Oak Park or City Hall. Those are brief. Did I catch it all?
So, I'm gonna also discuss posting our committee meetings when we talk about that.
Okay, thank you. The other one I'll do, and I'll catch me, and then Liz, I'll turn to you, is in the past and up till this point still, I'm a legislative chair, and Denise already mentioned that tomorrow is an AMSD meeting. And Cora is very simple to get to. Go west on Highway 36. When you get to Rice, take a right turn, and it's about two blocks, and you'll see a big school building. And go in there, and that's where the meeting is. Any board member can walk in, attend that meeting. You don't have to register ahead of time. There is a breakfast, but you gotta be there about 7:00 or soon thereafter. If anybody wants to ride with me, I can arrange to meet you at Rutherford about 6:30 or shortly thereafter. It would help if you told me, so I'd wait for you. And if nobody else goes, that's fine with me. I will drive myself. And then there is a C meeting, which is the following Friday. Now, both of those I mentioned because they're gonna be very heavy on legislative. For C meetings, though, let Barbara know, because they register, and there is a lunch that's supplied for anybody who's interested after the meeting. And their meetings start at 9:30 officially, but about a half an hour before that is networking and whatever. If you have other questions, Jennifer's been our representative to AMSD. Denise goes regularly, they can give you background, and that's all I have.
I'm giving you an extra half hour of sleep tomorrow, actually, because the legislators are joining us. Breakfast doesn't start till 7:30 to 8:00.
Oh, I like that.
And then the program's 8:00 to 10:00, so you get a little bit of extra time for travel or sleep, so.
Okay, and the parking lot offer is at 7:00 o'clock, not 6:30. That's great. I love it. Liz, anything?
I just had a question, if a finance meeting has been set up, to look at the additional million that we need to cut.
Not if, yet. I, I'm not aware of, but.
No, and I, I think that's a great question, because there are a couple of other things for you to consider as a board. You know, one of the things I heard you talk about tonight is expectations and what a lot of that might, I think, board orientation, your intention was to be able to do that at a certain time, because many of the things I heard you talking about are opposite of what Mary Sicconi and the board talked about, just within a year. So, if that's a different direction, then we, as your administrative team, need to know that, so that we can adjust if that's a, a different thought with that. One of the other pieces that is, I guess, perfect timing for this is, you know, we have updated assumptions from the finance committee. We have our new revised budget. We have next year's levy. Director Hoheizl has entered all that information. And so, we have more current numbers for you than we probably ever had, for you to be able to look at where you are and where you want to go. So, when you're, we can have Barb send something out and talk to a couple of you about some possible dates and try to get that done.
Thank you. Liz? Mark?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Having gone through all of that, working groups, et cetera, we're done? All right, let's adjourn.
Hit that gavel.
Meeting's adjourned. Thanks, everybody.